I call the meeting to order. The Clayton City Council for June 6th. Please note that all members are present with the exception of Councilmember Pierce and Shuey, who will be here shortly. Would you please rise with me? We'll do the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, the first thing we have up is the consent calendar.
Move approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Prove the consent calendar. Any further discussion? Hearing none, signify support by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. All right. Next, we have record recognitions and presentations. And the first we have our certificates of recognition to the Clayton Police Cadets, Kaylee Finney and Jaden Shaw for dedicated service with the Clayton Police Department. If they would come forward with the chief, we'll have their certificates. And I will let the chief introduce or... Come on over this way because we're gonna... There's the camera there and the folks at home will be watching you. And I'll let the Chief of Police, Chris Wenzel, do the introductions.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, City Manager, Cabinet. I'd like to introduce two of our cadets. Unfortunately, they're leaving us, but they're going to better things. They're going to college. First, we have Kaylee Finney. She'll be going to Webster University on a soccer scholarship. And she's been with the Clayton Police Department as a volunteer cadet for three years. The cadet program, when I first came here, I was very impressed. I came in November, December. We had a tree lighting and all the cadets came in and I was so impressed when they came to work and they were focused, they looked good, they just walked around, got their equipment, went out there, did their business. Like, wow, these guys are truly professional. And all the special events that they attend run perfectly. And I wish her the best in her endeavors and hopefully she'll get into the criminal justice system, maybe come back as a police officer. Well, we'll see. So...
(inaudible).
Standing up, I apologize. This is Officer Sterick. He's the coordinator of our cadets. He's the one that when we have events, he organizes them, makes sure that they're signed properly and gets them out there and helps the city in directing of traffic and other issues. So I thank him for his work. Our other cadet who's leaving us, he's going to Northern Arizona University to study criminal justice. So he'll also be coming back here to work. He worked for two years with the Clayton Police Department Cadet Program and is Jaden Shaw.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Great, great group. Oh, you're gonna do a photograph for us. All right. Fantastic. Good luck. Okay, I think the next ones that we have are for the Do the Right Thing. And this is for the public school students who selected for exemplifying the characteristic of courage during the month of May, June, and July of this year. And we have no one from the elementary school, but we do have four individuals from the middle school. And if... I'll call them up one at a time and then we will have the representative from the school tell us a little bit about each one of them. First, we have Natalie Prouche. Correct? All right.
All right. So Natalie, some of you might recognize Natalie. Natalie is in eighth grade this year, but she has been the correspondent for the Clayton Pioneer for three years. So she writes articles about Diablo View and that. So I thought it was a very good place to recognize her for all her contributions for the city and the local newspaper. So congratulations.
What we'll do after we bring each individual up, we'll take a group photo with all of the students. All right? Thank you so much. Next, we have Mason Oakley.
Just sit in the front. You can sit in the front.
We'll bring you back up for that. Mason Oakley, Do the Right Thing.
So Mason is amazing and he has quite an accomplishment. And again, all the four students that I brought, I think, really exemplify courage. They really have to step out of their comfort zones a lot. And Mason is being recognized because he has never missed a day of school since kindergarten, which is a phenomenal accomplishment, absolutely phenomenal. And the more interesting thing is that I was here last year with his brother Gunner. So he comes from an amazing family that has quite the good genes in keeping healthy. And so I'm proud to recognize you, Mason.
We introduce each one of them. Okay, Angela Doria.
So Angela here is one of our leadership students. And she was also the recipient at our award ceremony last week of the Diablo View Spirit Award. And that's for students we recognize, a boy and a girl. And Angela was recognized for her spirit and her contributions to the happenings around Diablo View. And I think Angela, she is a vital person on campus and always in there willing to help and do whatever she needs to. And she actually herself talks about courage and that Angela does have a hearing loss. So she really has overcome that and really become a real contributing member of Diablo View. So congratulations.
Sam Amoudrian. I think if I haven't misspelled that.
So Sam is one. He always has a smile on his face. But I wanted to recognize Sam because he really shows courage and a place where I think a lot of especially middle schoolers would be like, ah, well, I try. But Sam, every semester, the PE classes have a Presidential Fitness Standards that they have to compete for. And Sam never missed one for six semesters. So he made the Presidential Fitness Standards for every semester while he was at Diablo View.
That's great.
So that takes a lot of stamina and wanting to do well.
All the issues that were back up, we're gonna take a photograph and then any of the parents that wish to take photographs as well, please do that as well. The one that Tuya is gonna be taking will be the one that goes in the Pioneer. So come on in here. Hold up your certificate so she can... We can all see it? Got it? Okay, and all the families, take as many as you need and one. Okay. Next, we come to reports. There's no planning commission to report on, so we have nothing there. No trails and landscape, city manager and staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No report though tonight.
Thank you. All right. We move on to the City Council and we'll begin with Vice Mayor Keith Hayden. What's going on, Keith?
Okay. Boiler, room clears out. I didn't actually hear words.
We're gonna put the budget on every meeting.
Very effective. For those of you at home, yes. Went to the... On the 19th of May, had the Budget Subcommittee Meeting. Tuya, Gary, and Kevin and I went over the budget that's being presented this evening. Very well done. You'll see a very nice report. Lots of good information and excellent explanations also for how that information was... is used and how we have to do the best we can with what we're given. Next up, on the 25th, was the Clayton Business and Community Association's monthly meeting up at Oakhurst. And then on the 29th, we had Clayton's Memorial Day Event downtown. And I'm sure the mayor addressed that. He gave a very nice memorial speech down there along with the other dignitaries. Then on the 1st of June, had a mayor's conference over in Richmond. We had the opportunity to tour the last victory ship that was actually built there at the shipyards and then had the mayor's conference also. This past Saturday, we had the first Clay Chord Bachi Tournament, which took the best four teams from the conquered Bachi League and they competed against the best four of the Clayton Bachi League. And it was conducted over at the Ipsen Family Bachi Park that was built with blessing really of the Ipsen Family, partnership really between the Ipsen Family and the CBCA. It's been a very successful effort over there. And this was the first time that we had a major tournament between the two cities and Clayton did pull out a victory. The Avengers from the Clayton Bachi League was the victors. And that kept me busy while we were gone. So back to you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Tuya.
So my report is a little bit similar to Councilmember Hayden's. I'll take the first three events from you. So I also attended the Budget Committee Meeting on the 19th, then the Memorial Day Event on the 25th, and then the CBCA Meeting on the 25th and then the Memorial Day Event on the 29th. And that is it.
Great. Thank you so much. Well, I was also quite busy the past couple of weeks and I'm just finishing here making sure I don't miss anything. But back on the 17th of May, I attended the Contra Costa Water District Meeting. Very interesting. They are moving ahead with a lot of great programs that are gonna ultimately benefit us all in the things that they do. I attended on Monday, the 22nd, the very first inaugural first responders and fire district barbecue, which they demonstrated a number of great things, the new equipment that the fire district has and working with the emergency medical responders who come out when there's an issue. And in fact, they gave a demonstration of if there were a traffic collision, how to pull someone out with his jaws of life and all the coordination between the Highway Patrol, the AMR people and the fire district on how to respond to that and make sure that the individual gets top flight care. Then on the 25th, attended two meetings, first starting off with the Clayton Business and Community Association General Membership Meeting and then shooting over to Danville for the East Bay Division of the California League of Cities, where we got to meet the new director for the state organization and what things she's gonna be looking to do over her term in office. The 27th, concert. And then finally, on Monday, the 29th, attended and addressed the community leaders at the Memorial Day Ceremony for that. But that clears up for my calendar and we will now move into public comment for non-agenda items. And I don't have any cards and I don't see anybody rushing up to speak, so we'll pass on that. There's no public hearings. But now we'll move to item 8A, which is to consider the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 476, adding section 17.22 of the residential density calculations for residential parcels with sensitive land areas to title 17 zoning for the Clayton Municipal Code describing and determining how general plan densities are calculated for the proposed residential projects with the sensitive land areas. Mindy Gentry.
Thank you and good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. There's a memo placed on the dais this evening for you. City staff received an email from Mr. Bill Jordan in regards to compliance with state law for the city's housing element. And the memo indicates, is recommending that the council take no action on this item to give staff additional time to research these items. However, staff is now recommending that it be continued to the second meeting in July, which would be July 18th.
All right. Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Mayor, barring any other questions that the council members might have, we would recommend you reopen the public hearing and then accept any comments. Kevin, you can't say anything? He's the only member of the audience. And then close the public hearing and then continue it to July 18th at 7:00 p.m.
To July 18th?
It's July 18th.
July 18th.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So this is a public item and we would like to open up for public comment at this time and invite anybody in the audience to come forward and address this matter. Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing, bring it back. Council, have any questions?
No, apparently we should go ahead and go along with the recommendation to continue.
I got a few. No, kidding. You got some questions came up.
All right. So we are gonna continue this item to our meeting on July 18th. Correct?
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
Do we need a motion?
I'll make a motion to continue the item to July 18th.
I'll second that.
It's moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all signify support by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordered. Okay. Takes care of item 8A. 8B, we are going to take a look in the introduction and presentation of the proposed city of Clayton budget for fiscal year 2017, 2018, and the proposed capital improvement project, five-year budget, and set the date for Tuesday of June 20th, 2017, for a public hearing to review and adopt the proposed city budget. Mr. City Finance Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Diaz. In person, yes. So the member of the audience has now stepped forward. So as each year, this presentation is just an overview of a very comprehensive proposed budget that's attached to the staff report. I think it's thousands of pages long. No, it's somewhere around 200 pages long. And my goal in this presentation is to summarize a large document in about 18 slides, 17, 18 slides. But if the City Council or members of the public have any questions or want me to clarify any of the slides that we covered, I'd be... Yes. She just left.
I'm a little disappointed. 18, 17? I mean, I think if we had shot for maybe 13, that would have been a little bit, you know...
The next meeting, it will be short.
Cut it down, yeah.
Promise. So I'd be happy to answer those after this presentation. So the first slide starts off with a five-year trend of the city budget as a whole. Ultimately, the total budget for next year, fiscal year 17, 18, is expenditures being proposed of $12,455,371. Ultimately, that's made up of 25 different funds, which are summarized here. I'll use the little laser thingy. So we have the general fund. We have the other special funds, which there's an asterisk next to that because that includes 11 of the city special revenue funds, two of the internal service funds, one enterprise fund, and eight fiduciary funds. And then we have the Capital Improvement Program Fund, which is the CIP up there, and then the successor agency below that. So the order by size of all of the budget areas is consistent with the prior year budget. And the 11, approximately 11.02% reduction from the prior year budget is actually due to two main areas. One being the California Department of Finance, or DOF we call it, actually approved the repayment of the fire station note of $475,000 between the successor agency to the general fund. So because that was approved by the state and occurred in 17, that's not gonna be coming again in 18. That was a one-time large expenditure, which is a good win for the city's general fund and the city's operations in general. And then the second area is in fiscal year 2017, we had very large appropriations for the 2016 arterial street project, which was funded by the Measure J Fund and then expended in the CIP Fund. And that will be completed by June 30th, is our projection, and those are non-recurring into the next year. So ultimately, those two big expenditures in the prior year will not be reoccurring next year. So that's why we have the big drop of about 11%. So this slide summarizes the revenues of the total city budget by fund. And 84.5% of total revenues of the city are derived ultimately from three funds of all the ones that are in that pie chart, that being the general fund at number one, the Landscape Maintenance District at number two, and the gas tax fund at number three. So the general fund, as everyone in this room knows, is the largest source of revenue for accounting for general public services, such as, you know, public safety and community development, which we'll get into later. The second one, the Landscape Maintenance District, at 15.71% of all city budget revenues, accounts for Measure H, which was on the ballot and approved by the voters in June 2016 by a 77.1% margin, when we needed only two-thirds. So that was a great return for a special parcel tax. So it's a mellow ruse district. And that's restricted to arterial and specified medians, maintenance operation of the trail system, open space, and we debatement, and does not include any of the parks. The third area is gas tax, which accounts for restricted revenues from the state for our street projects. One thing to point out with the gas tax fund at 5.07% is now we have two new revenue sources this year that didn't appear in prior years. And one of those is a repayment from the state of loans, basically money that it took from local agencies. It's finally paying it back to us as they plan to. And then the other is from section 2030 for the Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Act, or SB 1, which is approved just in 2017, a few months ago. This chart, similar to the other charts, summarizes all expenditures for the total city budget. One thing I did not point out is that it excludes the Capital Improvement Program Fund and the fiduci... All of the nine fiduciary funds, so the eight plus the successor agency, because those are kind of outside of the general scope of city operations. Similar to the revenues, three of the funds cover the majority of the pie, more or less. So the top three, being the general fund, Landscape District, and Measure J, comprise 80.4% of total proposed appropriations next year. The general fund is at 53.54%. The Landscape Maintenance District is at 18.02. That's a little bit of an increase from the prior year and a lot of that has to do with expanded procedures, larger projects planned next year, one being a new 20-week project planned by Public Works to install landscape replanting, as well as an expansion to the list of planned improvement projects, which we'll get into in slide 13. And then the third largest area is Measure J, and that dropped to number three from the second one this year because of the completion of the $1.2 million arterial rehabilitation project this fiscal year. So the next few slides are gonna cover kind of just the general fund and we're gonna start with the revenues before we move on to the expenditures. This is basically a 17-year history, which we like to show every single year, which kind of shows hypothetical revenues if they were adjusted for inflation compared to as-is, what we've actually adopted in prior years and are proposing this year. So using fiscal year 2002 as a base year, the red line, the higher line right there, ultimately shows hypothetical revenues if they were adjusted every year by the April-to-April Consumer Price Index, which is basically the inflation that we use. And it's actually the April-to-April Bay Area inflation, so we're not using the national one. And then the blue line, of course, is the actual adopted general fund revenues. So ultimately, what does this mean to us? It tells us that budgeted revenues have not kept pace with inflation at all, falling short of the basis in fiscal year 2018, the proposed budget, by $992,000. So we're getting closer compared to in 13, there was a very large gap. But still, if you assume that costs generally grow more or less at inflation, we're still kind of operating, you know, a shoestring budget for this town, which is good. We've been able to provide full public services with notable restraints. The following slide provides an illustration of how the basic Prop 13 property taxes, that's Prop 13 from 1978, are divvied up. And Prop 13 controlled basically how the ad valorem tax can grow. And ad valorem is essentially the percentage based on the assessed value of each property. And the 1% is the maximum tax that can be applied to the assessed value. So some highlights here is that the allocation is based on TRA, or Tax Rate Area, of which the city of Clayton actually has 10. And of all of those 10 tax rate areas that we do have, the average that we get is the 6.6% or 6.6 cents of every dollar of property taxes that is received by the county. So ultimately, that makes us fifth in line, meaning that 93% of property taxes goes elsewhere. So when constituents do have questions on property taxes, it's very important for us to be able to communicate. We have to share the property tax with many other agencies and we get a very small proportion of that. So, you know, considering other cities receive a much larger share of that $1, that 1%, for instance, Berkeley receives 40.3 cents of every dollar, which is more than four times larger than ours. We... That's why we're considered a low property tax city compared to many. I mean, lots of cities in Contra Costa County are that way, but we are exceptionally low. So the following chart is similar to the property tax one, but it shows a pie chart distribution of how the local 8.25% sales tax rate is shared amongst local, regional, and state agencies. So one important thing to note here is in the prior year, the percentage was actually 8.5%. However, effective January 1, 2017, with the expiration of the voter-approved Prop 30, the state base was reduced from 7.5% to 7.25, which was a net decrease of 0.25%. And that's why we're seeing an overall reduction in sales tax, which is good for the taxpayer and the layman out there buying things. But that had no adverse impact to the city of Clayton. So ultimately, the city in proportion is the third in line on where sales tax is distributed. And ultimately, we get 12.1 cents of every local sales tax dollar collected. So the city receives that 1% up there, which is called the Bradley Burns share, and with the largest portion going to the state general fund, that 3.68%, which means they get 44.6% of every dollar collected for sales tax. So this chart, this pie chart, shows where general fund revenue is derived from and each source's proportionate share of the budget. And in total, there are proposed general fund revenues of $4,465,360. The order is consistent with the prior year, with the exception of sales tax and franchise fees, which flipped. We'll get into that in just a moment. So the largest share of revenue is from property tax in lieu of VLF, which is vehicle license fees, and that's at 20.7% of the pie. And that's ultimately a subset of property tax. It grows, just like our secured property tax does, or in bad years can decline. And ultimately, we got that after the state swapped their property taxes for our local VLF in 2004, which we used to get. So we are projecting pretty conservative with that at 2% over current year actuals, over 17 actuals. at 2% over current year actuals, over 17 actuals, which equates to about 4.4% over the prior year adopted figure for property tax in lieu of VLF. The second largest share of general fund revenue is property, the property tax share at 20.3%. And that, we are just projecting, we're being conservative as well and going with a 2% growth rate over fiscal year 2017 actuals, which is actually a large 5.1% growth over fiscal year 2017 adopted budget. That just meant that we went conservative last year as well, so we can actually, that is to our benefit this fiscal year. The third largest, which we said overtook sales taxes here, is for franchise fees. And that, we're actually going to go even a little more conservative. And more approximately, not exactly, the growth that we have there projected is 1% over actuals in 17, and 5.3% over the last year's adopted budget. The reason being for that is to not get too aggressive because we're not sure what's going to happen, of course, with the ever-growing development of wireless technologies, which can impact our cable franchise agreement and some others. So it's a pretty reliable figure at 1%. Finally, the fourth largest is going to be our sales and use taxes. That is going to be actually 6.4% projected to over, sorry, this one is somewhat unique because even though we're projecting a 2% growth over projected actual figures for fiscal year 2017, there's actually a reduction from the prior year adopted budget of 6.4%. And that is largely becoming not because of changes we don't believe in purchasing habits of our residents at the Clayton Station in downtown area, but more because of the triple flip dissolution last year, which we talked about in last year's budget. It kind of threw a wrench in our projections because the state used to get 25% of, 25 cents of our $1 Bradley Burns, of our 1%. And that went away January 1st of 2016. So we had to project 17 using unreliable actuals. So the fact that it's 6.4 is pretty close. So it's actually pretty good. And now we'll have a more reliable base figure in future years, starting in fiscal year 19 and so forth, now that the triple flip is done. So these top four sources ultimately make up 62.4% of general fund budgeted revenues, with the other remainders outlined there. Similar to the previous pie chart, this summarizes general fund appropriations by department. And total appropriations being proposed in next year's budget for the general fund The order of size by departments is consistent with the prior years, while with the exception of general services exceeding Public Works this year, which is discussed in more detail in the coming slides.
If this were the city of Bill, how would it be different?
David. 90% city council.
He looks like a pair.
Looked like Pac-Man. It would look much different, that's for sure. So yeah, the largest, of course, with the prior year is still the police department at 53.3 cents of every general fund dollar being spent for public safety. So that includes 10 of our 11 sworn officers, with the 11th being funded by a special revenue source through the cops' citizens' option for public safety revenues from the state, as well as our dispatch services contracted with the city of Concord, and animal services contracted with the county, and many other public safety factors, but those being the largest. The second largest area is the Admin, Finance, and Legal Department at 21.5%. That was also the second last year. And that accounts for the support for the general fund, as well as 25 of the city's other funds. So all of the special revenue funds, the fiduciary funds, some of them don't even get charged and don't even transfer back to the city because we can't, because they're benefit assessment districts and it's stipulated in the agreement. But we do receive transfers in the general fund to kind of recover some of this cost. And that's in the form of revenue, which in the prior slide, just jumping back real quick, was up there, that 14.8% that other revenues column. So that's a pretty big chunk that we have. Yeah, so I think that summarizes the most, the largest highlights there. One thing to note, too, is Public Works time. That little sliver there for Public Works, we don't want the public to misconstrue that and think that that's for the whole maintenance and Public Works function. That is just for the maintenance of basically City Hall and the city courtyard and city facilities. And then their cost, the maintenance personnel and their direct costs are spread amongst all the other funds, as well as the two other departments in the general fund, the library and the, where are you? Community, Clayton Community Park Department. So one significant change that we are proposing in the fiscal year 18 budget is in the Public Works Department workforce. So there are three changes that we are recommending to the city council. And one of them is to delete the second maintenance supervisor position following the retirement of our, one of our two maintenance supervisors in the current year. The second is to elevate the city's two experienced maintenance worker ones to maintenance worker two positions for their journeyman skills, because we currently now have four. And two of the guys are very, they're very new at it. And they're essentially at the same position. And kind of, we want to establish more of a hierarchy here. And then the third change is to basically rename the maintenance lead worker to a senior maintenance worker. So the goal of these changes is twofold, with the first being to boost the morale of the city's dedicated and tenured maintenance workers, and the second being to improve departmental efficiency by establishing a more clear and evident line of hierarchy below the maintenance supervisor position. And it will help now that, basically, the buck stops with the one supervisor to report, of course, to the city manager. And the additional costs associated with these changes will be spread amongst the eight maintenance department programs, which includes five funds totally outside of the general fund. So the burden is not shared just by the general fund for these. So this slide is a two-year budgetary comparison of general fund expenditures. As you can see, there's 4.54% growth from last year's adopted budget to this year's proposed budget and appropriations. And that's largely attributable to increases in the Admin, Finance, and Legal Department, Police Department, and the Community Park Department. These increases are caused by unavoidable increases to the fixed dollar billing from CalPERS to pay down the UAL, what we call the unfunded actuarial liability, which we will discuss in depth, actually, this year in three slides coming up. As well as, we incorporated the terms of the latest Police Officers Association, POA, and miscellaneous labor agreements, and assumed annual merit increases for those that are eligible to receive them next fiscal year. Doesn't mean they will, but we're assuming to be conservative in the budget that they will. And then the third largest factor explaining the increase is additional time projected to be spent by Public Works on the Clayton Community Park, based on historical actuals to, you know, just maintain the pipelines and the fields and everything up there. So here we go, probably the most important line with the general fund. This is a summary of the bottom line for next year's proposed budget. And the main figure to look at, well, one of the main figures right there is that $10,830 figure. I do have to correct the slide, just looking at it, for everyone here. That should say fiscal year 17, 18 surplus. Just noticing that.
Oh, let's start over.
Yeah. Okay, I gotta type it, I'll be back. But yes, sorry. So that is the proposed surplus for the general fund next fiscal year. That ultimately results in a projected general fund equity balance as of June 30th, 2018, of $5,504,259. This, for next year's budget, actually, we're going to open up the fiscal year with a fund balance of that $5.493 million that is actually 1.23 times the size of proposed general fund expenditures for next fiscal year, which means we can operate for over a year off of reserves alone if we needed to in an emergency situation. And I looked around at all different cities in Contra Costa County and then the Bay Area. That's a very uncommon feat and a pretty good accomplishment for the city over the years to build that up.
Uncommon feat?
Uncommon and phenomenal. How about that feat that identified?
If I might just want editorial in here, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. While we get caught up in numbers, I think it's important to state for the public that the fiscal year budget that's being proposed is, means no reduction in public services to the community. And sometimes we get lost in the numbers and how they all move around, but we're able to not only continue the public services that they have given us the revenues to do so, but we're also absorbing in this year's budget impacts created by movements in CalPERS. I know that's sometimes a nasty word, but we've been able to absorb that within this budget without any reduction in services as well.
And is this a balanced budget?
I think that's a great question. Kevin, is it a balanced budget?
Yes. I'm thinking yes, it is.
It's almost like we spoon-fed you that.
Thanks for being the shill there, Vice Mayor.
I'll be your huckleberry.
And another important thing to point out looking at these numbers is the fund balance there is actually net of the earmarks approved by the city council to set aside the fiscal year 2015 and 2016 surpluses. So that was $389,000 in fiscal year 15 and $203,000 in 16. So we're not double counting any of that. That's been removed, earmarked, and separated within the general fund reserves for specific approved purposes. So the next slides, the remaining slides summarize kind of some of the highlights in the other funds that we wanted to go over with the city council tonight and the members of the public. So just a moment here. This is basically a summary of the capital projects that we are proposing to be funded by the gas tax fund next fiscal year. So not necessarily expenditures of those projects. We'll get to those in the CIP slide. This is just what we plan to send from the gas tax fund, restricted fund, to the CIP for projects. So consistent with the prior year budget, we plan to utilize all of gas tax next year revenues and all of the available reserves for projects and eligible projects and street operations, which will result in a zero fund balance as of June 30th of 2018. The largest project of the three that we plan to have funded is the 2018 Neighborhood Streets Repave Project, consistent with prior years. As of right now, that is a CIP that the city engineer does track in the CIP budget. However, no contract and specs have been issued for that yet. It's more or less a placeholder that he hopes to present to the city council for approval during the year. The second largest project to be funded there is the Keller Ridge Collector Street Rehab Project, estimated to be $150,000. And then the final one is $6,000, which is an annual funding source from the gas tax fund to the CIP fund for restricted ADA street improvements. This slide, similar to the previous one, is a summary of capital projects planned for the Landscape Maintenance District. But unlike the previous slide, this is not just funding. This is the actual capital cost we expect to incur next fiscal year out of the LMD. So really, the two new projects on this list, the other, the bottom three have been appropriated in prior years, but we didn't get to them, so they're rolling forward into next year's budget. The two new ones are the top ones, the Downtown Planner Replacement Project, estimated to be $270,000, and a removal of 18 eucalyptus trees in the Open Space Hills, estimated to be $185,000. So right now, the replacement project for the entryways, which was originally planned for 17, is kind of not moving along just because of complications that the Public Works Department had identified because the, what was it? The as-is, there were some problems with the as-built. And they just weren't going to be able to get it done with the estimated budget of $300,000. So we're not re-appropriating that $300,000 into that entryways project. That's lapsing. And it opens up the funding available for the Downtown Planner's project.
What's the, where are the 18 eucalyptus?
Yeah, where are we taking those out?
Other than the fact that they're dangerous.
That's the answer. And they're in the open space. The reason for the sizable cost is the accessibility of those.
I know, but where are they? Where are we talking?
Oh, the Oakhurst Hills. I can't tell you. This one's here and that.
No, but I mean, in general, I'm just trying to think of...
Well, where they are, they're not standalones. They're near subdivision fences or other things, but they're in our open space. And they're presenting some hazards.
On the trails?
No, it could be around a subdivision that backs up to open space.
So there's one and two all over the city.
Correct. Up in the Oakhurst Hill areas, that's correct.
And that goes out to competitive bid?
That's correct. Yeah, these are all placeholders and they're all subject to whatever competitive bidding is. Anything over $5,000 goes out to bid. That $5,000 actually is way old in law. But I mean, it's like, what, 30 years old, I think, even? And we wish it would increase. But of course, it does invoke some competitive bidding in that requirement. Yeah, so we've evaluated those eucalyptus trees that are out there. They do present some concerns. And we need to remove them. So, and that's why we are asking for the money for that purpose.
Thank you, Gary. This slide is a summary of all of the seven different projects we have planned in the Capital Improvement Program for next fiscal year. Of the seven, three are new, with the remainder being tracked in prior year CIP budgets. The three new projects that we have in the proposed budget right now are for the Clayton Community Park Lower Field Rehabilitation, the Downtown Pedestrian Improvement Project, and the North Valley Park Playground Rehabilitation. So the Downtown Pedestrian Improvement Project is going to be funded in part by an OBG2 grant, which is federal funds, now mounting to $308,000. And the other federally funded project, which we've tracked in the past, is the Keller Ridge Collector Street Rehab. And that's going to be $385,000 in federal funds that we hope to receive. Luckily, that is still beneath the $750,000 single audit threshold. So that's not going to push us over, where we're going to have to incur costs for additional audits and, you know, reports to be filed.
And just for clarification, I know council members know this, but the Keller Ridge Collector Street Project is out to bid right now. So that's positive. But it will not be started and completed until next fiscal year, and that's why it's up there. Just for clarification, the Downtown Pedestrian Improvement Project has to do with the raised crosswalks over by, off of Oak Street for the elementary school. They also have lights in there for pedestrian awareness and also driver awareness.
I was going to ask that.
And then the other location, and this is by a grant, is by the Downtown Clock Main Street and Old Marsh Creek Road.
Yeah, okay, thank you for that.
Shocked at the price for that, though.
Well, it's, that's the, you know, if there's anything left, it's returned to the grant source. The North Valley Park Playground Rehabilitation, that project, we envision, Councilmember Shuey's aware the resilient play surface up there is, you know, quite is old and deteriorating, needs to be replaced. And doesn't make sense to take, you know, the resilient play surface up and take the play apparatus out there, put brand-new resilient play surface in, and then put the old play structures back in. And so we're envisioning that And so we're envisioning that that will include some new playground apparatus, and we intend to or want to cover the existing picnic tables that are out there. There's very little shade, and to put some of those picnic covers out there to invite more park use up in that area.
Are we looking at different trees that might actually grow and provide shade, such as our down, I mean, that Keller Ridge Park was, I think, before our downtown park, and our downtown park trees have grown up and provided shade, and the Keller Ridge is still barren, essentially.
Yeah, we're looking at whether to incorporate some trees as well into that project. It is pretty, right now, it's pretty sunny.
Yeah.
So ultimately, in total, total project expenditures in the CIP for next year are All of that will be offset by a combination of transfers from other funds like gas tax and Measure J, federal grants, and other funding sources. So all that is fully funded right now. We have funding sources.
And I just, Gary, I think you and I have talked about this, but for the lower field rehabilitation, when that is ready, I think realistically, the city should be able to talk to both the Little League and soccer, and they may be willing to contribute and make it more complete and more extensive, because I know that for soccer, they still want to use that lower field if they can, and baseball definitely does. And so I'm just saying that, you know, I know we're short on funds, but that may be a potential revenue that we can team with them to do.
Well, that's encouraging news, council member, and the $50,000 is from the maintenance supervisor's previous indicator. It does not mean we're going to put AstroTurf in or the fake field. We're restoring it and putting back turf, but those fields have not been rehabilitated comprehensively since they were put in, and that was in the late 1990s. And so, yeah, if there's any infield things that need to be done for mounds or other types of things, we can take a look at that and work with.
Yeah, I just, I think, as you're aware, but the rest of the council and others, the efforts to find a home for Clayton Valley Little League are hitting snags, and, you know, we've had three or four years now of decent success at our fields, at the CCP fields, and there's really not a whole lot of other options. So there's been discussion at our board level about what can we do if we're going to, if everything else falls through and these are truly going to be our home, then we want to really sink some money into it and make it better for the kids and the families. So I think they would do that, and I know from soccer discussions with their former president, they've got a new president this year, but the former president is still, you know, and they would be potentially another source to help for that.
$50,000 really won't go that far.
No, that's very true, depending upon all of them. Of course, we can always augment that funding as well, but it's not too early to start that dialogue, because between sports seasons, there's a very short window period for this project to take place. So we ought to begin that dialogue, but it would be nice to have soccer return to those fields up there.
And I know they would like to.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. So the next three slides summarize a fun topic. The next three are going to serve to provide an update on the status of the city's CalPERS administered pension plan, unfunded actuarial liability, and its budgetary impacts. So right here is a seven-year trend line of the city's miscellaneous and safety pension UALs, which is, I'm just going to call it UAL from now on, the unfunded actuarial liability, using the latest CalPERS Actuary Report. And as you can see, the blue line is the trend of the public safety, basically Tier One UAL liability, and the red is the miscellaneous, which is notably smaller than the safety. So the oldest information we have, unfortunately, from CalPERS starts in 6/30/2011, which is largely because we're part of a very large cost-sharing plan, which many other agencies larger than us, you know, are part of throughout California. And the remaining, the final two years in this are actually, there's asterisks next to those because of the projections based in the latest CalPERS. So the actual data from CalPERS is 6/30/11 through 6/30/15, and then projections from CalPERS in the latest actuary for '16 and '17, which do show a downward trend, which I'll get into.
Hey, Kevin, as an accountant, do you trust CalPERS at all?
I don't know. Unfortunately, there's nowhere else to turn.
Not my question. Please answer the question.
It's, you know, I think they do the best that they can. You know, we like to blame CalPERS.
Really?
The, one of the questions I always ask, too, even in my former audit world, is what if, what if the feds were required to report on the status of the social security program and how unfunded that is, and produce a balance sheet every single year?
Oh, so two wrongs make a right?
I'm curious how red that would be, you know? So they're mandating that the CalPERS, they're mandating the CalPERS to get to 100% funding, you know, 90%, you know, when who knows what kind of funding is going on at the federal, you know, I don't want to point fingers at the feds.
And I'm sure, you're doing a great job, but I seriously, do you trust anything that they put out? I mean, you really have to look at it and say, is this based on any rational data? Their return rates are crap, aren't they? I mean, realistic?
They seem 7.5, which we'll get into on the next slide, which did change from the CalPERS Board. It does seem high when you look at what are the returns, which I'll get into as well in just a moment.
Okay, I'm sorry.
What are the actual returns? What they say, of course, is that the discount rate is the long-term smoothing, you know, whatever that means. We look at it, so for instance, we see some increases right here from 14 to 15, and that's largely because of the market returns at that time. And I believe in fiscal year 2015, there was a market return of CalPERS of 2.2% for the cost-sharing plan that we're pooled with, and actually 0.5% in '16. So you would expect to see, even though they didn't return as much as they expected in '15, and that's why you see this increase from 14, even though you'd expect to see another increase in '16 and '17 because of the market returns and where the trend seems to be going, the reason it's declining is because of that new fixed-dollar UAL payment that the CalPERS has imposed on all of its participating agencies. And the reason they did that is because in fiscal year 2012 through '14, you see this decline here, and everyone, you know, here, I was shouting, "Hooray, this is great news", you know, trusting what CalPERS published, of course, and the reason that occurred largely is because of, you know, attrition in the workforce and people moving from the Tier One status, retiring and going into PEPRA and Tier Two. But then, of course, they realize, hey, you know, we're not collecting enough that we need to pay down the unfunded liability, because the previous formula was based on a percentage of payroll. So hypothetically, 10% of every dollar, we're going to use 10% employee earns, the employer agrees to contribute that to the fund, and the employee agrees to contribute a certain percentage. You know, when that employee leaves, you're not collecting enough to pay down the UAL, or if, you know, if the UAL grows, you need to increase that. So what do you do? Increase the percentage? You can't increase the percentage if you have no more Tier Ones left to pay it down. So that's why they hit us with the fixed-dollar amount.
So I heard you say it's broken. Okay.
The non, councilor, the non sequitur answer is, we fully pay what they bill us.
Fair enough. And I just wanted to note, the reason I'm asking Kevin these questions is because in the years you've been here, I've grown to trust your judgment on this, and this is a particular point that sticks in my craw, and I continually see this stuff, and it drives me batty. So, but you're doing a great job, as is Gary and staff, in terms of doing whatever we can, and the reality is, is they shove it down our throats, and we don't really have any choice, but it's still nasty. So anyway, sorry to interrupt you.
And I'm with you, and where I would, I would look at this, and you look at the returns, the historical returns, and you wonder why it's going down, and the only explanation is because we know the market, based on what they just returned, is not exceeding 7%, which is the new benchmark, which we'll cover next, but it's only because of the UALs being paid down. And also, we have, we have a side fund, which we'll get to as well, and those are going to start to be paid down as well. So right here is a good summary slide. On December 21st of 2016, the CalPERS Board voted to reduce the actuarially assumed smooth discount rate, we'll say, from 7.5% to 7%, which was going to be changed over the next three years. So the result of that is, if they're getting less return from the investment market, then that has to come essentially from the employer, or the employees, or people not making it to their actuarial life, the actuary determine age or something, you know, terrible like that, but that's the only way that you get the funding. So ultimately, what they said is, well, based on this new assumed reduction in the discount rate from seven and a half to seven, we have to revise and increase the previously approved normal cost contribution percentages. So that's the percentage of payroll contribution that the employer and employee have to contribute, as well as increase the fixed UAL payments that they've already approved in their actuary reports. And this table is actually very useful for us for budgetary planning to see, okay, what's the impact going to be over the next several fiscal years? And the first fiscal year, it's important to note, where we feel these hikes, these percentage increases because of that discount rate reduction, is not next fiscal year, but the following fiscal year and fiscal year 18, 19. So that's the year ending June 30th of 2019. So the last slide covering the pension kind of tells us what the impact of the UAL, the status of the UAL, and the discount rat, as I call it, well, actually, we like to call CalPERS the discount rat. Unfortunately, the icon there covered the title, so you can't read it. That's supposed to be rate. So it's the impact of the UAL.
I think it's perfect.
So we'll just, we'll refer to it as the rat. So what the impact is of those. So ultimately, what we see here, which is very interesting in this chart, which summarizes are the past, sorry, the past 11 years of actual pension contributions to the fund and our projections for the next four years. So this is basically what the city's pension expense is, citywide, what we have to contribute to CalPERS, what they bill us to pay for pensions and the unfunded liability and such. So interesting thing to note here is the decline from fiscal year 2012 to fiscal year 2015. As we discussed previously, that discount was all because of the attrition of Tier Ones, the implementation of PEPRA, and replacement of those Tier Ones into more affordable Tier Twos and PEPRA employees, which ultimately reduced the benefits, increased the contribution requirements for employees and the employer, had actuarial changes and everything. So we actually, all cities that, after PEPRA, experienced this decline over the course of three fiscal years. So ultimately, what happened, CalPERS then steps back and says, hey, we're not, we're not collecting enough money now to pay down this UAL that keeps growing because we're not meeting our investment returns in the, you know, in the short run. So they created the UAL, fixed-dollar payments, and that's why we see that hike in '16 and in '17, so we could pay that fixed-dollar amounts. So the increase not, pardon me, I lost my train of thought. So realistically, in fiscal year 2017, it's relatively flatlined. Generally, you would expect this to grow, given the situation of the UAL and, you know, the attrition of the Tier Ones, but that increase wasn't experienced in '17 because of short staffing levels, mainly in the police department during the year, as well as the public works. So if you don't have the position, you know, scraping to get by, then you're not on the hook for those pension contributions for that year. So that's why these, it's not like '17 was normally supposed to be that low, it's mainly because of the workforce. Then you see the hike in fiscal year 2018, which is the current proposed budget of approximately And that hike is simply because of projected increases in the fixed-dollar amount that CalPERS is going to be billing for the UAL. One important thing to note is despite that increase, the City General Fund and all of the cities were able to sustain it because the economy's healthy. It didn't cause any cutbacks to public services or anything, so that, even though it's in the red to indicate it went up, it didn't result in any reductions to public services or any of our programs.
Wait, wait, wait. That says 2018.
Yeah, that's the proposed budget for next year.
Right.
So that's what we have to, that's what the City General Fund proposed budget and the other funds had to basically swallow for a balanced budget next year.
And what's the plus 73 from what?
That is, that is the increase in pension expense from the current fiscal year.
So if you look at the 2017 blue, and then the 2018 yellow, it's plus 73?
Yes, citywide.
The minus 82, the next year is going from 2018 to 2019?
Correct.
Okay. And then...
And I'll explain that, too, yeah. Well, Gary, yeah, actually you just said...
Because one of the side funds that was created, or we were pooled into back in 2004, will be paid off, and so that will drop out of the rate that CalPERS will charge us. So we have that one-year side fund savings, but then, based upon their discounting of the rates and their UALs, we expect we're not going to realize that other than that single year, because then in 2020, the rate goes back up.
Exactly.
Although we, you know, so there is an ongoing savings, if you will, because it does not go up as dramatically if, you know, we still have that side fund in year 2020.
So ultimately, due to the sensitivity surrounding the UAL and volatility of contributions based on market returns, or CalPERS Board action, and law changes, the proposed budget includes a recommendation to the city council to set up a pension rate stabilization fund. The recommendation is to fund that from two sources, the first being from, to reallocate the $110,000 of General Fund fiscal year 2016 surplus, originally set aside by the city council to address the shortfall we were going to, we were expecting to feel from the DOF clawback. We thought we were going to see an ultimate loss in general fund revenue next fiscal year of $110,000 because of the DOFs, of how they would interpret some of our repayments and the ROPS. So the way the law works is if they interpreted it one way, we were going to lose $110,000, and if they interpreted it another way, which was basically to not consider the fire station note as a loan repayment, then we weren't going to get that loss. So because the fire station was not interpreted in the first way, the negative way, we didn't actually have to eat that cost in '18, which is great news. However, the budget is now proposing to the city council that we redirect that $110,000 now to this Internal Service Fund. The second source of proposed funding would be for, from the General Fund fiscal year 2017 projected surplus, which we estimate is going to be $338,000. Of course, that's a projection at this point, and no action needs to be taken on that. We're not recommending any action on the '17 surplus, but that could potentially be available to set aside to address this matter. So ultimately, contributions to this new Internal Service Fund that the city council creates would not decrease the Tier One unfunded liabilities, so the UALs wouldn't go down as a result of this. However, they would create a useful tool to mitigate the risk of CalPERS-imposed hikes on future employer contributions to the city's ongoing general fund budget. So on that schedule here, where we see these percentage increases on the fixed-dollar UALs and the percentage of the normal cost percentage contribution, it would kind of be a hedge against those increases. We would be, the city council would authorize a set aside into the Internal Service Fund, and we could normalize future general fund operating budgets. So the general fund wouldn't have to eat that and the other funds by itself, it would have this more, kind of like a sinking fund to help.
But if we didn't have that change on the element that you were talking about, plus the $10,000 from the proposed, we don't have anything to, we would have to cut elsewhere to deal with this unfunded liability increase, correct?
That's correct.
And so when we're robbing Peter to pay Paul now, you know, that's fine, we've got a balanced budget, but we're not going to have those options available or those elements that, to draw from in the future, correct? So we're going to have to make some changes.
It's so hard to predict in the long run. You know, we tried to create this four-year tool to see what's going to happen down the line, and ultimately, staff right now, I have staff working on 2022 and 2023 and what's going to happen. So we don't know if the, if the market return goes up, then maybe CalPERS could revise the UAL billings and decrease those. You know, okay, maybe that's wishful thinking, but we're not sure, because by, once we set up this pension stabilization Internal Service Fund, if we do have future general fund surpluses, we can still continue to set those aside into the Internal Service Fund to pay for this. And the other funds, frankly, may, can be budgeted in the future to contribute to this as well. I mean, they're receiving services, they don't have any personnel, so all of the other funds borrow basically from the general fund to get the work done, like Landscape Maintenance District and Gas Tax and so forth.
There is no magic pill. If there was a magic pill, then other cities would have discovered it, and we'd be employing it.
Well, actually, I'm not sure other cities would. I bet you guys would have. I mean, I want to, I want to make it very clear to everybody, I'm... I mean, I, I wanna, I wanna make it very clear to everybody, I, I'm continually amazed at how awesome you guys are at doing what you do. It's still frustrating, it's all getup, and the fact of the matter is, in the 16-plus years I've been on the council, we, Clayton continually outthinks the rest of the state and clearly the Fed and, and everything, and, you know, it's, it's extremely frustrating. So when I'm asking these questions, you know, I'm hoping to gosh that you guys are, and I know you're brighter than everybody else out there, but I know you're brighter than I am, so I'm hoping that you're there, but I get it, that this is, this is a zero-sum game, that we're, we're not winning, and it's frustrating.
Yeah, well, thank you, Councilmember, for those comments. So we're trying to, by creating this pension rate stabilization fund, it's there as a buffer or a hedge. It's still our primary mission to try to absorb those increases in subsequent years within the annual budget, but if we can't, then that is available to us, and that's a policy decision by the council. The other thing is, because that would equal almost $500,000, some cities are actually saying, well, we're going to send that $500,000 to Sacramento to CalPERS, because that will reduce our unfunded liabilities. My feeling is, is I would rather keep the money and retain it for our purposes, earn interest on it, than give it to CalPERS, because number one, I don't trust them, and number two, they're just gonna come up with another magic formula, they're going to ask for more money. So don't send your money before it's being asked, you know, in terms of buydown. Some people are playing that game. I prefer to, at least the recommendation is, okay, let's see how we can continue to manage it, as Mr. Mizuno said, creating an internal service fund that will draw interest from the city's investment portfolio, as opposed to losing that money and sending it to Sacramento in hopes that their magic calculator won't do us any more damage.
Better planning to keep it in our own pocket.
Correct, yeah.
Well said.
And if you agree with that, at least the process there, what we intend to do is come back at your next meeting with a resolution that will actually create that fund, and by the creation of that fund, then we'll put conditions on it that, you know, just to make sure people understand and are comfortable that the city manager can't rob that, you know, can only be appropriated or allocated by council action, because it truly is there to help stabilize the public services in our community.
Good. And Kevin, before you change the title of that slide, I thought it probably was appropriate, discount rat, I thought it was the rotten annual target.
Maybe it's for the best, it's rat. Thank you, Vice Mayor Hayden. So that, that concludes the exhilarating presentation of the proposed fiscal year 2018 budget. I want to thank the city manager, Mr. Gary Napper, and members of the City Council Budget Subcommittee for all of their valued input and all the time on putting together and helping crunch the numbers for this budget. So it's always a big process, so everyone's input and different views are very constructive and helpful. So I'd like to pass it back to the mayor for consideration.
Any additional comments or questions from the council?
Just that, Tuya and I spent a delightful couple hours, and it worked out that way, truly, because we're...
This is why I'm not on the Subcommittee. I would never, I would never term it delightful. I like the people, I just don't like the subject.
But the final result, the final result makes you feel good about what we're doing with what we have to work with, and that we have an excellent team giving good recommendations to the council. I like the pie chart, the visuals, I think are very helpful in breaking it out, and very easy to understand data with all the backup explanation in the report itself. So again, did a good job.
Great.
Yeah, and it was a Friday afternoon, too. We stayed there past 5:00, I think. But I think, for me, you know, so this is my first day on the council, so first day on the Budget Committee, but it, it's very helpful process to kind of understand and dive into some of those figures and understand where the monies come in and where they go out and kind of how that all works. But I think one, one sort of fact that I don't think you highlighted, it's in the report, but is the amount of the reserves, which I think is 1.18 times right now, which I think is very conservative, but very healthy, and compared to a lot of many other cities, I think we're well ahead, and it's a very positive number.
Great. And I just want to, again, I, apparently, I'm now the old man on the council that is a curmudgeon, when this, every time budget comes around or, or labor negotiations, but the vast majority of people have no idea how much time Gary and Kevin and staff spend just really working this down to nickels and dimes and pennies, and, you know, I did serve on the Budget Subcommittee, and I hope to never do it again, but it, it was invaluable because I think every council member needs to see what you guys do and how you deal with it, and the, the citizens of Clayton ought to be tickled pink that we have you guys, because year after year, there's doom and gloom, and we are still light-years ahead of almost everybody else, and that's a testament to you guys, and so thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you, councilmember, and we appreciate that there's no recidivism. Great. Okay, this is a public item, and I'd like to open it up for public input and offer the opportunity for anybody in the audience to come forth and address this item.
Rump, rump.
Seeing no rush, I'm gonna close the public hearing and bring it back for any final discussion from the council.
I think we heard that we all are in favor of what we've been presented, since it looks like a very well-thought-out plan that's gonna protect Clayton moving forward. So with that, I'd like to make a motion that we set Tuesday, June 20th, 2016, at 7:00 PM. In Hoyer Hall is the date, time, and location of a public hearing on the proposed city budgets.
Second.
And it's been moved and seconded to set up a separate meeting on the, on Tuesday, the 20th, for 7:00 PM here at Hoyer Hall, to finalize the information relative to the fiscal year 2017-18 city budget, moved and seconded. Any, all those signify support by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, and no abstentions? Ordered, okay. Great. Item 8C, we are now have the City Council discussion on canceling any regular council meetings in July, August, and/or September 2017, relative to quorum availability and summer vacation plans. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. With that last agenda item, you deserve a vacation, so we're putting this up for an opportunity to take a look at the summer plans. The City Council, by municipal code, meets the first and third Tuesdays of every month. In July, the first Tuesday is July 4th, which is a holiday of the city, as well as our nation, and therefore, the municipal code has addressed that and says, well, if a holiday falls on your regular meeting date, you would meet on the following Wednesday, so that'd be July 5th. Then there is a, your second meeting in July would be July 18th. We think, given past practice, as well as looking at the agenda items that are coming forward, that at least in July, staff believes we can handle all the items that are required of city business by the one meeting on July 18th, and suggest canceling your July 5th meeting. Looking at August, because in July, we accomplished the things that are necessary for that fiscal year that we'll be in, we would suggest that you could afford to cancel one meeting in August. Councilmember Pierce is not here, but she will be in town, the first meeting in August, which would be August 1st. It's up to you, but if you, we think you could get by with one meeting in August as well, and that pattern continues into September. September 5th is the day after Labor Day, there's a lot of people that go out of town or are just getting back and have a, a meeting that evening after Labor Day on Tuesday, September 5th. In the past, that has been canceled, and so you would have your one meeting in September, which would occur on September 19th. So if that meets with your plans or, or your desires, we would recommend that you cancel the July 5th, pick, pick your meeting in August that you wish, wish to hold, and then cancel the Tuesday, September 5th meeting.
Okay, what a pleasure of the council.
Well, we, yeah, we need to check quorum. I, I am going to be on vacation for the second meeting in July, for the 18th, so I'm not around at that. As long as there's a quorum, then I think that's fine, but just so, is anybody else going to be gone during, or for July 18th?
Nope.
Okay, so then that, that July looks good, then?
And Councilmember Pierce will be here for that one as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
August 1st, Councilmember Pierce is here, I'm here.
I'm, I'm around.
This is the first week in, the first meeting in August? Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Fine with me, yeah.
So then cancel the second meeting in August?
Sure, August 15th canceled, okay.
Which one is that?
It'll be 15th.
15th.
Okay, so we will go with the first?
Sounds like September, it's a good idea to cancel the one after Labor Day.
Yeah, you already got that, September 5th you cancel, and we'll be meeting on the 19th.
Yep.
Do we need a motion to?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just a note for your edification, as well as any members of the public, if there's some urgent business, the law allows that we, you can call a special meeting by the mayor, and we would utilize that authority if necessary, and that would be noted to the public as well.
Okay, so if we cancel the July 5th, August 15th, and September 5th meetings for the reasons discussed.
Second?
Moving to seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those signify support by saying aye?
Aye.
And opposed, abstentions, ordered. Very good.
Thank you.
Item 9 is council items limited to requests and directives for future meetings. Anybody have anything? See nothing there. No closed session for tonight, and we will now adjourn this meeting to the meeting on Tuesday, June 20th. Back here at Hoyer Hall.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you very much.